I'd like to call the meeting, the planned good meeting for February 24th in order. Members present, we've got Mike King, we've got Ken Buckman, town planner.
Richard Swanson.
Richard Swanson. And who's that guy in the end? And our town engineer Charlie Rowley.
I'm an hour early tonight, so you probably don't recognize me.
Oh, I'm not used to seeing you either. First, business, just want to jump right to the zoning articles, get rid of our audience here.
Excuse me. If I have a moment, though, may I call the finance committee to order?
Yep.
And call the role, Mr. Clerk?
Jody Smith, chairman pigeon, vice chair Dave Heard and Jerry Stefanski.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Michael. May I ask, though, or extend my appreciation for your courtesy in asking us to come to this meeting and share the hearings with you. We both have to do hearings, and this certainly is a convenient way for everyone concerned. Thank you again. Thank you, Ken, for thinking of us.
Just a second, do. So, if you, Mr. Chairman, if it's all right with you, I'll proceed with the, a couple of slides I have, one for each of the zoning articles.
Okay, so yours.
First on the list is the revised definition of multifamily units. And this is in section 340.2, 340, 340.4 of the definitions of uses in the zoning bylaws. And this came about as a result of somebody extending the definition of a duplex unit to mean one that wasn't attached to the other, except by a smaller structure. And the idea of this revision of definition is to say that they have to share a wall, a demising wall, which is a piece that separates both units in the, of the...
The duplex.
Of the duplex, or triplex, or quadplex, quadplex, or five-unit building. That's simple enough, I think.
Yeah. We talked that one to death.
The next one is the sign bylaw. The way this came about is we had, last year, submitted a zoning bylaw amendment that was passed by town meeting, that changed some of the zoning regarding signs in that Article 11 of the zoning bylaw. Well, the attorney general of the state pointed out that there was a Supreme Court case called Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona, back in 2015, that said you cannot regulate the content of signs, it's a violation of free speech. Now, Reed was a, represented a church in Gilbert, Arizona, that put up a directional sign that said, "This way for the church event." And this, and the town of Gilbert said it was a violation of their zoning bylaws, because they regulated the religious content of signs in the zoning bylaw. So, the, essentially what you can't do is violate free speech, and we all agree with that. But you may regulate the design of a sign by the zoning district. Now, what I've done with this article is to take a bylaw that was previously approved by the attorney general under consideration of Reed versus the town of Gilbert, and was essentially a replacement of Article 11 of the zoning bylaw with this new section that's been approved by the state attorney general in general format. I've changed the, some of the dimensional standards to fit with our zoning, our existing zoning bylaw, and what we allow in terms of signs at this time. But overall, the zoning bylaw that's submitted here is one that has been approved by the AG and doesn't regulate the content of the signs. Otherwise, it includes all the standards and the conditions that you would expect with signs, so that they're, they provide the kind of character and look and feel of the town that we wanted to promote. Do you have any questions on that?
I have a question. This town of Gilbert, Arizona, it was the religious content that they had an issue with?
What they had done was, they had said that a sign that included a religious institution, that was put up by a religious institution for some purpose, had to be regulated in a certain way. And the Supreme Court said that you can't regulate by content. It just happened that they had a zoning, and our zoning bylaws include things like different types of businesses that are specifically mentioned, and the, like political signs as well, that you cannot regulate by the particular information that's put on the sign. You can only regulate the design of the signs. And that was the, essentially, what happened at Gilbert.
Just for my own education, you said earlier, the sign said, "This way to church service," and it was an arrow? I think for the purpose of definition, what would you call a church other than a church? What is another proper name for that building?
Religious institution.
So, using the word religion is okay, but using the word church is not okay?
No, 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 no. I'm sorry, misrepresented. If you, if you, if a religious institution were to present a sign saying that they had an event with a direction and time and information as to how to get to the church where they're holding that event, and the building inspector from the town came out and said, "You can't, you can't post that sign for, because of the size, or the length of time, or whatever it is, because we regulate the religious sign, religious institutions in terms of the signs that they put up." That would be what the Supreme Court case was about, and how it was about free speech.
Right. So, that's the message on the signing. So, now, we're doing what, determining the dimension of the sign and not the content of the sign?
Dimension and number of signs and illumination and number of signs on a business is what we're regulating, and not the content of the sign. We regulate it by district. So, then, the residential area, signs are small and inconspicuous. In a business district, the signs are larger and go on the basis of the facade of the building. In the industrial parks, we allow ladder signs to define the businesses that are there. So, we regulate by district rather than by a particular type of business, or something that would define a user or a party.
So, what happens in an overlay district, as we've been discussing over the past months? They get the, the sign of the overlay category?
No, they would get the sign of a business or industrial category, depending on what kind of overlay district it is.
Okay.
Excuse me, just to clarify things, then, in the incident, in the case of Reed, when it was, we had, they had specific signs for churches, they might have a specific sign for a pharmacy, they might have a specific sign for a pot shop, and you're saying we can't do that. We have to have a sign by district, the size and so on.
Correct.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Go in once, go in twice?
One other question. If we're changing the sign bylaws, obviously, a number of organizations within the town may have to change their signs. Is there a time limit involved? So, if I have a store and all of a sudden I don't comply, do I have a time limit, or do I need to change it immediately?
That's an excellent question.
The signs will all comply, if they comply with the existing zoning bylaw.
They grandfathered in?
They grandfathered in.
All right. So...
If you went to replace it, you're going to refer, but sure, whatever, then you have to go through the new bylaws.
Correct.
Bring it up to speed.
Is that it? The last zoning bylaw is on floodplains, and it modifies Section 222 of the zoning bylaw with a list of maps, and Section 420, which is the floodplain overlay district. Now, there's a, there's a process in the federal regulations that says property owner can appeal the designation of the flood hazard on their property if they're outside or above the flood elevation, to, and thereby protected from the requirements of the flood insurance program, and still be protected under the, under federal law. Now, there have been a number of, quite a few apparently, of individual property owners who have been going through that process of appealing the designation and getting approved to that effect. What that's done is, it's come to the point where the FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency that runs the National Flood Insurance Program, has said that they're going to modify our maps and recognize all those individual property changes that have come along in the process. And in doing that, we're going to reference those maps in our zoning bylaw to remain in compliance with the flood insurance program of the, of the federal government. So, in case there is a flood event, we'll have our residents, property owners, protected and able to recover for losses. Now, in doing this, the State Flood Plane Management Office was the one that had provided us with the information on the maps and warned us it was coming. They also reviewed our zoning bylaws and noted that there was a conflict, conflict with the building code that comes along with the zoning that's in place. And if you're familiar with state law, the building code, which has public health and safety involved in it, overrides all zoning. So, you can't force zoning if it's going to create a conflict with the building code. Building code will override zoning. So, in that instance, the suggestion was that we amend our Section 440, the overlay district, so that it would be in, 420, 440 is actually 420, I'm sorry. So that it doesn't conflict with the building code. Questions?
Are the new maps done, or are they going to be done?
They are done.
They're done. And...
The maps themselves don't, don't show changes in the, in the boundaries. What they do is they reference the...
Areas?
They reference the appeals that have been done.
Oh, okay.
On, in those districts.
Mr. Manese has a question.
Just a question on this. Now, what is the impact for the town of Wareham by making this change?
We provide continuous coverage of the flood insurance program for the residents of town. So, in the event of a flood event, we'll get the full resources of the Federal Emergency Management Agency to assist.
Without doing this, that might not happen.
Correct.
All right.
Or we'd get sued by the federal government in, don't want that either, no.
Ken, what is the actual change that's being made to the zone, to the overlay district? What language is actually being changed?
Section 421 of the floodplain district regulations is stricken from the bylaw.
Is anything taking its place?
Under section, new section 421, which is, was 422, the state building code reference is deleted.
421 is removed in entirety, and 422 then becomes 421? Is that what I heard?
That's correct. And that section is modified to, remove the reference to the state building code.
421.1 is the section that calls out the 50% rule.
That's, that's correct. And that's covered under, under state building code.
So, does 421.1 conflict with the state building code in any way or fashion?
Yes, it does. That was the determination of the State Flood Plane Management Officer.
And how is that? I just get a little, when we start striking language, it just...
How do you use the mic, Jim?
I just, when we start striking language, it's, it's been in place for a long time, seems to work. If we have something that's similar in the state building code that's going to cover this, oh, well and good. If not, if this doesn't go against the building code, I don't know why I would strike it, unless they said if we don't, we're going to sue you. Does anybody file a complaint, or, that's all, you know? Just so we're striking all this language. I didn't see anything really put in its place.
The building commissioner is here tonight. I'd asked him to come to fill in some of the blanks if it was necessary. And I guess the question is, does the state building code include the, all the requirements of construction in the floodplain that FEMA requires?
I would say yes, a 50% rule.
Please come up to the mic.
You got to come up to the mic, Dave.
Yeah, I don't have the bylaws, I left them in my office, but yeah, the 50% rule is in, stated in the, in the building code.
And other, and the other regulations regarding work in the A and V zone?
A and V zones are in Chapter 1, yeah, of the building code.
So, let me, let me understand, Ken. 421 was a section in the floodplain zoning... (noise) Excuse me, I'm sorry. That conflicted with the state code? And the people in state that you talked to suggested that we take out our 421 and just rely on, on theirs? And the building commissioner is here to say that the terms and conditions that we're trying to address in 421 are covered in the state code, and we should rely on that and that alone from now on?
That's correct.
So, 421 talks about new construction, and the 50% rule talks about coastal high-hazard areas, it talks about new construction, talks about a lot of, and one, and structural requirements that will, that will conform to mass state building code. And I was under the assumption that state building code always overrode local building code. Is that true, Dave? The state always overrides local if there's a conflict or a difference?
It's more stringent, but I would say state, I don't know if there's a local building code. I never heard of one. I've heard of state building code, zoning, yeah.
I'm sorry, or zoning code. Thank you, David. So, but if they're, in the situation we're in now, where the state says our local 421 zoning isn't in concurrence with the state's code in the same, relative to the same areas of concern, the state overrides?
Correct.
And they would, whether or not we had 421 in there or out of there, is what I'm understanding. This may just be nothing more than administrative cleanup. I'm, I, I don't want to make this more than it is.
And I'd just like to, on 421.2, as we're talking about V-zone and AO-zones, talk about, since these areas are extremely hazardous due to high-velocity waters from tidal and storm surges, no development or redevelopment should be permitted within a FEMA, V-zone, or AO-zone, or their equivalent. Is that conflict with the state building code?
You can, you can, yes, if saying you can't build in a V-zone, yes, that would, that would be in conflict.
So, you can build in a V-zone?
You can. There are, there are ways to do so. You have to, you know, have a design professional, you have the first-floor elevations and stuff like that.
Even if there wasn't a structure there before?
Correct, yes. As long as it's out of the flood zone, in the first-floor elevation, you'd put building on piles or some kind of breakaway...
Living quarters.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ken, what would be the heading of the new Section 421?
Base flood elevation and floodway data.
Did I hear you say that in 420, what is now 422.1, that you would strike out a reference to the mass state building code?
Yes, I did.
Why? Wouldn't it be important to at least alert people looking at this board or the zoning bylaw to know that they have to comply? Where do we refer them if there's nothing referenced here? And what conflict would there be with the FEMA code if you mentioned that you have to go by the mass state building code?
We reference it in the, what was 4, Section 425, which is now the new 424, relationship to state and federal laws and regulations. And it lists all the, all the federal, all the state regulations, mentions the federal regulations and state laws, and specifies the building code, the wetlands protection, the inland regulations, the sewage disposal. All this, all the, all those regulations are referenced in the later section. So, that's how they'd be, they'd know.
Jim Manese again. I just, if I remember correctly, I believe a lot of this language was put into effect after the two hurricanes we had back, was it Bob and Gloria? Because of the fact that so many structures were destroyed in the velocity zones and whatnot. I guess they've kind of changed their mind on how we, how we look at things and how we evaluate them.
I don't want to say you couldn't say no building in the V-zone. State building code trumps it, but if you want to say there's, there's no construction in certain areas, you can do that. The problem is you're subject to the takings, the idea that by, by regulation, you've taken away the value of the property if you say no development in that, in that district, whereas other regulations may say that you can.
In the area of 421.2 that we struck out, required, it refers to the 50% rule, which is that if damage is less than or equal to 50% of the value of the property, the property can be rebuilt using existing code, I believe. If it's above that, then it has to apply to the current code. Is that explained elsewhere in the bylaw? Or are we just taking that out entirely?
Taking that out entirely and asking for people to refer to other laws that include, including the state building code, which, which specifies that restriction. You know, I guess one of the things we could do is have a little bit better education for people about floodplain construction, because it's going to save people a lot of heartache and headache if they understand what the restrictions are and what the potential implications of building in the flood, floodplain and the V-zone might be.
Right, but at the same time, in Wareham in particular, we have a lot of buildings that are in the flood zone.
Right, there's a lot already built in.
During, should we, heaven forbid, have a severe hurricane, a lot of those buildings will be damaged, or have the potential to be damaged. So, if the damage is less than 50% of the value of the property, will they be able to rebuild?
I, I'm not, I don't know if that's exactly accurate about the way the law works. The 50% rule is, is one that... The 50% rule is one that, my understanding is, the value of reconstruction, if it exceeds 50%, then the building has to be floodproofed, which means...
Yeah, it has to be elevated out of the flood zone.
Or is that still in effect even though we removed it from our bylaw?
Yes, it is.
All right. All right, thank you. Thank you for enlightening me. I don't understand all the rules.
Ken, can you explain what sections of 421 were in violation that were pointed out by FEMA that said it should be removed?
It wasn't FEMA, it was the state floodplain management.
Well, whatever agency it was, what specifically did they point to and say this is a violation?
I'll have to get the report. I don't recall what the specifics were, except that it was in violation of the state building code. Or, not in violation, I shouldn't say that, it conflicted with the state building code.
It seemed rather than wholesale taking out a section, why wouldn't it make sense to see what those conflicts were and adjust the language accordingly in the sections we've got?
That'd be another option. I'll leave it up to the board if you want to proceed with a second revision.
Didn't you say, though, that everything in that section that we took out that we didn't need was put into that other section or was covered into the other section?
It's referenced in the other section.
Right, so we really didn't lose it, just lost a number, basically, because all that information is followed in the next paragraph.
Correct?
Correct.
Rule 41?
Yeah, it isn't spelled out, though, and that's what Charlie's pointing out, that it's not spelled out in the bylaw. And so people don't necessarily get it off directly.
So it's covered but not really explained?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Would we be putting ourselves in peril by leaving this language in?
Leaving the language in, yes, you would.
So we would be risking not being covered by the flood insurance?
Having errors in the, I don't know if it would be enough to say no coverage of flood insurance, but it would be potentially some penalties against the town if the building code wasn't followed.
So, can I make a comment, Ken? I'm looking at 421, and the last section of 421, 421.4, is very simple, and it reads, "Structural requirements of floodplains and coastal high-hazard areas, including substantial improvements, shall conform to the Massachusetts State Building Code 780 CMR." Now, in looking at the 780 CMR document very quickly here, their section on the 50% rule is quite more extensive than what we have in our zoning document. Where I'm going with this is that I think 421.4 should stay in our document. It says we're going to conform with mass state law.
Well, as pointed out, section 424.2, the new section, which was 425.2, references those building codes as well.
The purpose of this is for proposal at town meeting, right?
That's correct.
So, my assessment here is, this is not ready to go to town meeting. I don't feel that I'm hearing, we've done enough study of the impact of the removal and deletion out of this. What is the building department's opinion of this? Are you recommending that it gets removed in addition to what the state is saying there is a conflict?
Yeah, I believe what Kenny's saying, it's basically, is in there, all the verbiage is in there in the building, in the...
Bylaws.
Yeah, it's in the bylaws, but the state building code is quite clear on the regulations of floodplain building. Basically, you know, if you raise the house out of the flood zone, it's protected as being out of the flood zone.
So, so federal FEMA...
You get an engineered floodplain elevation, first floor elevation, and that determines that you are out of the flood zone and not, you don't have to pay FEMA insurance.
Okay, but just so I understand the flow chart here, we're in jeopardy of not getting support from federal FEMA because of a conflict between us and the state regulation? So basically, the state of Massachusetts is saying your language is jeopardizing your federal support.
Mark, I think there's, I'm going to interject, I think there's two issues here. One is FEMA's updated the maps and we need to, we need to tell FEMA that, yes, we have to check a box and we have to tell them that we operate under the FEMA guidelines, and the FEMA guidelines that we operate under are the reference to new maps. And the other issue is, the state of Massachusetts has pointed out, hey, your 421 doesn't, conflicts with the state building code. I think, is that fair to say, Ken?
That's correct.
So, the FEMA issue is, the maps have been updated, we need to tell FEMA, yeah, we got the new maps, we agree with them, and we agree with your regulations, and we adhere to them. And if we don't do that, if we don't say, yes, we adhere to your regulations, FEMA can shut us off.
So who's the authority representing the town that says we agree with the map? Is that the building department?
Town meeting says the map applies when you vote section 220, and you say that the flood insurance rate maps in their latest version apply in the application of zoning.
From my perspective, if we don't tell them that we comply, people run the risk of losing their FEMA flood insurance. If people have an issue with what those maps are, there is a process for them to go dispute that and negotiate a settlement or an agreement or get turned down, whatever it may be, but there's a process for them. And these map updates, as Kenny's saying, all these map updates are the result of individual property owners negotiating change in terms to their flood maps. There's been no blanket change to the, like they did in, what, 2014, was it? They did the big changes?
Who can forget?
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, I don't think, I just want to understand the process at town meeting. So 400 people in the gymnasium are going to say we accept this map, when the decision on whether it's accepted or not should be at the individual property owner's discretion. Who is the authority from the town of Wareham that says these maps are the way that we want them to be? Is that the building department?
We don't have a choice.
We, yeah.
We don't have a choice.
The flood maps are provided to us by Federal Emergency Management Agency and the National Flood Insurance Program. And these flood insurance rate maps are ones that they say, this is the boundaries that we want you to regulate, in which case you'll be provided with cost-effective insurance and response from FEMA for damage in the floodplain, in those floodplains. So it says where they're going to apply their resources in our town.
So if we don't have a choice, what is the question at town meeting? We either accept or we decline? Is that the question that's being presented to the town?
Individual homeowners can appeal to FEMA for a floodplain evaluation or something like that.
The answer to your question is yes.
We're just accepting or declining it?
Correct.
And the individual homeowner has an opportunity to appeal on an individual basis.
So if the town accepts it, then the homeowner can bypass that and then still appeal?
That's correct.
They should appeal, but they can't bypass it, they have to appeal it, or else they lose their insurance.
Okay, so the map now defines the floodplain. Now the next question is, are we in compliance with state building code? And we're saying there's conflicting information between our bylaws and state building code.
Is that right?
I was going to run to the microphone.
Let's not, there's two, like I said before, I believe that there are two very separate and distinct issues, right?
Right.
Okay. Just want to be clear, the FEMA issue and the state compliance issue, they have nothing to do with each other, as far as I can tell.
Are they two separate bylaws?
They're two separate sections of the bylaw.
What is it? Are you moving to amend by dividing the question and having one on the floodplain acceptance and a separate vote on the development regulations? Are you trying to lump them all together and kind of...
Trying to lump them together.
Yeah, so you say, well, if we don't pass this on the floodplain designation, we pose a threat to the homeowners in the floodplain of not being able to get insurance. But really, it probably should divide that question and have two separate articles. Those are two separate things, aren't they?
Well, Ken, in 222, it has the maps, it references the maps, but exceptions haven't made, and the one we're just discussing is how they would comply with those exceptions.
I guess that's a good way to put it.
So you have to have both?
You have to have both. But I'm not saying you can separate them. I think you could separate them if you wanted to take the, to just accept the maps, which would be the federal requirement for further protection under the FEMA program.
Well, it would place the homeowner in peril not having the second level of it. I mean, I can conform to the maps, but I have to have the regulations that allow me to do so.
I think what would, in actual fact, what would occur is that there'd be a suit against the town if we were to say we're following our zoning bylaws and not the state building code.
I'm just wondering if that places the homeowner in unfair peril because of our indecision.
It does. It also puts the town in peril as well.
May I just try and understand this? The zoning maps, the actual zoning map has not changed. What we're doing with the new map is we're accepting the variances that have been granted to individual homeowners. Is that correct?
Essentially, yes.
All right, so what we're doing is, it's actually liberalizing it for the town. We're accepting the fact that Mark got an exception and could build on a particular location.
Correct.
All right. And as far as the other wording in the zoning bylaw, what we're doing there, apparently there are some wording that we have in our town bylaw, which seems to be in conflict with the state. So by removing that wording, we eliminate the conflict with the state.
Correct.
All right, I understand then. Thank you.
Just for the reference, as of the last couple of years, there's also private flood insurance available to people in Massachusetts. You don't have to go through FEMA.
No, you don't.
Okay, just for the record. Thank you.
But I think it would be in all of our best interest if we took the time to understand a little bit better around what was wrong with 421 and how it conflicted with the state, and also then understand by taking 421 out, what the replacement looked like. It's too vague at this point, I think, for us to make a decision on that. On the FEMA side, for me, that it's a very, it's a checkbox thing. Do we comply with FEMA regulations, yes or no? Yes, FEMA, we do, don't take away our insurance. And if we have an issue, individual homeowners can go deal with that as they may. So on the FEMA side, we have to do it. We've done it many times, I think. Every time FEMA updates their maps, it comes to the town to say, yes, we adopt, we adhere to your regulations. So that's pretty much a no-brainer. But the state one, I think we need to dive in a little deeper.
Ken, is there a timeframe for acceptance of this?
For the maps, yes. The maps have to be adopted by June 30th of this year.
So that would be the 222 part?
That'd be the 222. The rest can be whatever...
The FEMA stuff is by June. I think it's July 22nd, actually.
Oh, that's right. They had changed because they were late in putting out the revision of the maps. So the date changed to July 22nd.
So you go to the floor of town meeting by dropping off the other, the second half of it without endangering the first half or the legitimacy of the first half?
That's correct.
Or you could provide a good explanation at town meeting floor.
Better than I did now.
Satisfy Richard's concerns.
That's just one person's concern, so, I mean, I'm adaptable here to the majority.
No, I think a good explanation is appropriate.
Keep in mind, you're going to recommend your own, which in terms recommends to this finance committee of what our motion says.
Agreed.
And we typically have the, excuse me, we typically are the one that makes the motion and the recommendation.
So, are we at a point now where we need a motion to modify this to only address the FEMA aspect of the bill and to do some further study on the state conflict issue?
You have to, yes, you can do that, yeah. You can make that motion.
So I'd like to make a motion that we modify...
Why don't you wait until you close the hearing?
Good point. Thank you.
Charlie, you got a question over there also?
I'd like to address the body as a private citizen and not as your consultant, if I may. Just hearing the language, not the language, but hearing the discussion. If I were to go on town meeting floor and would be asked to vote on this, I wouldn't have the slightest idea what changes I was voting on. It would seem to me if the state came down to the town and said, your zoning bylaw is in violation of the FEMA regulations, it should at least say, and this is why. And to tell the planning office, and by way of the planning office, this board and your board, what those violations were. After you see them in writing, you should be able to take 421 and see whether or not there's a conflict. And if there is, modify the particular paragraph to get rid of the conflict. I challenge anybody in this room to know what the violation is. I don't, and I wouldn't want to have to vote on it on the town meeting floor. As far as the plans are concerned, I can't tell you how many times when I was in private practice that I was asked by an individual to get elevations of his property and to prepare a document that goes to FEMA that requests an amendment so that their property is taken out of a flood zone. Very simple procedure. In this particular case, they've apparently taken and adjusted the maps for multiple cases where this has happened. So it means that the lines of the flood zone, instead of going at the top of the hill down there at Ames Grove, is now going around it rather than up over the top, which is 15 to 20 feet above the level of the pond. I can understand that portion of it. And if you have to take a town meeting vote to accept changes in the plans for that, I don't see where that's an issue. But to ask anybody to vote on striking... But to ask anybody to vote on striking complete paragraphs out of the zoning bylaw without knowing what the violations in that paragraph were, it might mean striking out a, changing a word here or changing a word there, and you're done with it. Nobody knows. And I don't think it's unfair to expect any private citizen to go to town meeting floor and vote on it, one way or the other. It's a two-thirds vote to change the bylaw, is it not?
That's correct.
Yes.
What are you voting on? I don't know. It's my personal opinion.
I think that's, I think you and I are right in sync here, right?
I think it needs to be spelled out exactly what the violations were, so that you can address it in terms of the language to go to the bylaw and then write out the bylaw change itself, so you can see what that language is, and have a comparison. Go to town meeting with the comparison, say, here's what it was, here's what it needs to be, and this is the reason why.
Now, I would encourage you, I'd only encourage you, it's not appropriate for us to be pressuring other boards, but if you want to split this question, by all means, do so. But understand, as he's pointed out, in the second half of this, if you want an explanation, please, by all means, make up your minds as to what you would like it to say, so we'll have an opportunity to put it in print with our report and have it before every member of town meeting versus picking up a paper as they walk in the door. Because our report is available one week before. So they have an opportunity. And of course, the newspapers will have the opportunity to print it also. But I would encourage you to consider that. If, if you're not able to do so, just split it and withdraw the second half of the question and move it on to the next town meeting. It's, it is a complicated issue, and each person would like to understand how it does affect themselves.
Excuse me. Bernie, they can't, they can't split it because it would mean two warrants, correct? The warrants are closed.
Well, the one, no, I split it for another town meeting, not for this one.
But I thought there was a deadline?
Especially the only one that's still open.
Only one of them has a date deadline, Ken?
That's correct. Only the, only the FEMA maps, firm maps.
That answered my question.
Right, so we, we can, we can modify the warrant to less, but not more.
Correct.
So that's what we would be doing here.
No, that's, that's not true. You can modify any warrant on town line, whether to add or subtract.
Yeah, I thought Claire said it only has to be a very minor-
Has to be a minimalization.
I think that's up to the moderator. Whatever you write, if you want to change a warrant, I think the moderator has the right to accept or decline. I could be wrong.
I, I won't repeat for her, but I'll say that I have a feeling she's very strong about not changing on the town meeting floor.
That's okay.
I would have, I would have to agree with, with Ken that we leave this alone and look at it down the road and just present the flood maps for approval.
Yeah, I, I'm with you on that, you know, I, and the reason-
You want to close the hearing?
Close the public hearing and we'll make a motion and move it ahead.
Michael, you got it?
Motion to close the public hearing.
So, moved on, favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Michael. Can I make a motion to close our public hearing? Is that what we need to do?
Yep. Any discussion?
Second.
You had a second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I have four, zero, five, zero, four.
Well, that's right.
So now I'd like to make a motion that- I'd like to make a motion that we split this article into two halves and the FEMA map and regulations certification that we need to do be one article and that we include that in the town, Spring Town Meeting warrant and we take the conflicts pointed out to us by the state around 421 and table that for now and deal with it separately.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? You have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to vote on the other zoning articles too?
You want to do them all together or you want them one at a time?
One at a time, please.
Okay, I'm going to need a motion for signed by law.
We're just going to let them do the votes and then I'll recess to the, the hall.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second. The Article 3, Amendment to Section 340-4 for clarification of multifamily dwellings.
I move that we adopt that for Spring Town Meeting.
You have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
My wife. She probably watched.
All the other one, yeah. Signed by law.
Signed by, no, I think you got them all.
You got them all, Ken?
Yeah, you got them all. There were only three there. Yeah, that's right. Hey, thank you very much.
If I may say, Vice Chair, Mr. Batiste, I appreciate the invitation to coming here. I think this is the first time we've had such an in-depth discussion of such motions coming out of the planning board than in years. And I think it's better, we better understand what is going on now, and I appreciate it. Hopefully, we may do this in the future.
I will insist upon it. This was, this was very good discussion and I think very helpful for everybody.
Indeed, indeed. I think as far as we're concerned, I'll speak for the board, we are better informed as to these motions now than we ever were before in others, in other years. And thank you very much for the consideration. And I'll recess the finance committee to the corridor.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Hey, can we have some new money? We got to get new badges. Okay, next on the agenda, we're going back up on the top. We can do something with these minutes for January 13th.
You want to, you want to wait for the minutes until after the?
What were you at next? J.C. Engineering's not here.
J.C. Engineering isn't here, but they provided a, a plan. What I needed is a clarification from the board about what actually occurred, because the tape of the meeting did not have a closure of the public hearing and did not have a vote on the conditions for action on, on the special permit.
We listed the conditions, but we never voted on it?
You listed some conditions-
I don't think that's accurate, because I remember Emmanuel having a problem with it and-
Right, so nothing happened on the conditions? Do you recall something different?
I, I was under the impression that the conditions we set were the 50-foot no-touch between the edge of the road and the construction of the property, so that there was a buffer and you weren't looking at lawns right at the edge of the road.
There was a 20-foot buffer on the, on the north and south end.
The sides, right.
There were double driveways with no gap between them.
Correct.
Five of those instead of 10 individuals.
Correct. And, and everything was going to have a hammerhead-style driveway, so they wouldn't be backing out.
We, we debated the width of the driveway. What did we settle on? 12 feet?
If I've got my notes.
Recall. What was, what were they supposed to be?
18 feet wide.
18 feet up to the split, from the road to the split.
I'm going to read my notes. A buffer on the north and south edges of 10 feet. Five curb cuts for 10, for dub, for double driveways 18 feet wide. 50-foot landscape buffer. Interest in the common space is conveyed when the lots are sold and waterline extension per the water department is what my notes say.
So this is the design, both driveways. I don't see hammerhead stuff.
What I handed out here is the latest version from, from J.C. Engineering that responded to some of the changes that had been made. And I wanted to confirm that these were the, these included the conditions that you discussed.
I don't see the driveways, do you?
The only thing that I don't see in the driveway design is, is, is the hammerhead discussed, so that they don't have to back out onto that road. How do you, how do you get your car turned around to, to drive out of your driveway instead of back out of your driveway? I mean, that could easily be a, something that's corrected.
Well, the, the, yeah, the way it is now, they would have to back up all the way to the Y.
Correct, right. As long as, as long as that was addressed.
Wasn't, was there a discussion on the HOA?
Only that the, um-
I, I think the confusion was just between a, an HOA that owned all of the common space as a whole, as opposed to each individual owner owning-
And, and Charlie's point was that interest in that common space was deeded, was in the deed when, when homes were sold. Does that, do I have that right?
It's an undivided 10% interest in the whole.
Right.
All right, so just to clarify, as far as you're concerned, you did, you did close the hearing, you did discuss the conditions. You felt you met the, you had enough conditions on the plan.
For him to come back to us for an A and R.
And, and the conclusion of the special permit.
That's the way I walked out of the meeting.
I, I got to tell you though, Michael, I don't remember the no turn, the turnaround function, you know, you're talking about the-
The hammerhead.
The driveway design so that they can pull out headfirst.
Yeah.
I don't, I was, probably wasn't paying attention for whatever reason.
That's right. It happens to me all the time.
Can we, can we recreate this without the original members that voted on the hearing? This is, this is a different mix than it was here.
Right.
You weren't here, were you, Mike?
I wasn't here during the first, first one.
Well, as, as long as you, as you correctly made the decision, the process, then it sticks what was done before. And you don't need to do another action at this time with a different set of participants in the process.
But how do we know we're not missing something and the, the other two members would have commented on that?
I'll, I'll give them a call and ask them specifically.
Well, we were pretty unanimous on where we were, except, except for the turnaround.
Except for, yeah, the only, the only one that really wasn't crazy about the whole thing was Emmanuel. He, he just didn't like the design
Yeah.
in its entirety. Aside from that, the conditions that we put on, we were all in, in agreement on those.
Okay.
If he had to, he could, he could put his turnaround, he could put his hammerhead in there. Just doesn't show it on the print.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that input. We'll, we have it on the record now, anyway. So it apparently was somewhat confusing in the, on the DVD about what had actually occurred.
That was, as I remember, that discussion went on for quite some time.
Is, is the turnaround thing a mandatory condition that, that we, that we told Johnny he had to do?
That was part of our discussion that we wanted it, yeah. Because you, even if you've got a two-car-wide drive-
I get the point.
You can't get the car turned around so you can pull out.
I don't think John walked away with that as a condition, though. I mean, I wrote him down, conditions, boom, one, two, three, four, five, and I didn't write that one down.
We should get his, get him in here and make sure that's what he, he thought he was doing.
I just don't want him to waste another cycle, is all.
I agree.
You're being awful nice. So what's the board's pleasure?
Well, I, I don't know that we envisioned that Y driveway like that. That's not what I, as we were discussing, I, I envisioned you'd go straight up and then a hard right and hard left.
You approved the plan the way that it was, and you closed the hearing, so you can't make those changes now. I didn't write down what you did, but I did write a note that it was approved.
This driveway is not what he demonstrated on the last plan.
Doesn't make any difference. You didn't set standards for it, so he can put his driveways anywhere he wants, so long as there's one for each of two lots.
This whole, this whole exercise was about reducing the amount of asphalt. That's what the whole argument was. This design looks like it increases the amount of asphalt.
But Charlie, help me, help me here.
I'll try.
We, we had broken this down into three phases. One, did it meet the conditions in the planning board's eyes of making improvements? Did cluster zoning make improvements?
That, that was the first thing that you determined, as I recollect it, that the board felt. And it met the requirements as outlined in the zoning bylaw.
But I felt that, I thought that these were the conditions this board was putting on John to meet those cluster zoning-
I believe you're correct.
Not the A and R conditions or the special permit?
I, as memory has it, he withdrew the A and R.
Yes.
We have that on record, they did, yes.
So that he'll have to come back with the A and R, and I think the appropriate way is for the special permit to be signed to get recorded with the town clerk, so that the 20-day appeal period runs. And as soon as the appeal period is run and the decision is recorded, he can come back with the A and R plan.
I get, where I'm going is, is if, if we weren't clear on having the ability for a car to turn, turn around on the property so that they could pull out headfirst onto, onto the road. You know, my hearing, you say that we're too late to go back and add that?
Absolutely. You closed the hearing, you set your conditions that night.
And now, and you're sure that you voted, you made a motion and seconded, because we don't have that record in the, in the DVD.
I thought we, I, I, I don't believe in my mind we voted because we needed him to do something.
So we just got as far as setting conditions and that was it?
We set the conditions and we said, look, you need to revise his drawing. There was some, there was some prevention for us from voting that we asked him to come back for another meeting.
Yeah. It might have been to include the, the modification of the plan, but you approved the plan that night. I have it in my notes that I didn't write the details that Richard wrote down, but I put Charlotte Furnace Road, cluster approved. You voted on it four to one.
But I thought we voted on, yeah, you're right. We, you're right. You are right. We did, without the, without the turnaround function. That he met the, met the objectives of our zoning bylaws in regard to what a cluster zone would be.
Right.
And the next step was then to update the maps per those conditions that we gave him and come back and do the special permit and A and R.
Right.
Right?
So-
I agree with that.
At that point, would we, would we be in a position where we could suggest as a good partnership that this might be something that he'd consider including in his design?
Could suggest it, but that's-
Well, I mean, that's all we could do, is suggest it, right?
Whatever good it will do.
I, I thought we set a condition about the use of the common space, because didn't we talk about four-wheelers and motorcycles back there and and, and how that common space could be used?
One of the things he was going to change on the second meeting was he added the open space on the sides on the two ends. Otherwise, if he was on one side, you couldn't get to the back of that property unless you went through somebody else's yard.
Well, there is one parcel that extends to the rear, that looks like a right-of-way, that extends to the rear.
I think every one of those has direct access to the open space.
Access is covered by that plan. You can get to the backland by any one of the 10 lots, because they all face it. So you know, what you asked for was a buffer on each end, because I think it was the consensus that the requirements were that the, that the lots be surrounded by a buffer.
Correct.
So that's why you suggested the strips along the sides. And he agreed to do that. He agreed to the one driveway out for each of two lots.
That there would be the undivided self, undivided one-tenth interest in the open space.
And 50-foot landscape buffer.
I don't recall what other, there might have been, Richard.
Waterline extensions done according to the water department. So the answer, I think the answer to John is yes. He's met the conditions that we wrote down.
Set forth.
If you would mention to him that we'd be very grateful- If you would mention to him that we'd be very grateful if he'd consider...
I think it's going to make it a more saleable house.
Yeah, oh, sure.
Anybody in their right mind is going to look at it and go, oh, I don't want to back out onto that road.
Especially not down a long driveway.
Yeah, during the winter.
So...
All right, well, thank you very much, I appreciate this, this review, and it makes it a little clearer, I think, and apparently the record was not that clear on the...
Maybe we were mumbling.
Could be. You got to remember to turn your microphone on.
It's on. You, you got to talk to Richard about that, he's the one that keeps forgetting.
We'll send it back to you, Clark.
We're sitting.
Thank you.
So what are we going to do, Ken, send it back to him? You can't take no action in that, right?
Yeah, there'd be no action on it until you're ready to endorse the, the A and R, which, uh, he's going to submit with the, the special permit, as part of the special permit plans. Okay, you ready? So you can proceed on to the, the public hearing if you wish.
Next one on the agenda is 320 site plan review, major modifications for map 87, lot one, one Seth Toby Road, Wayham Retail Management, LLC.
Traffic engineer just stepped out real quickly, he'll be right back. Good evening, I know you guys have been at it for a while, we appreciate your patience and attention.
And yours, and yours as well.
This is, this is what we do, it's what we signed on for, so. I'm Lindsay Wilson from Brown Rudnick, counsel to the applicant, Wayham Retail Management, LLC. With me tonight is a lot of our team, actually, but principally Derek Redgate from High Point Engineering, Sean Kelly from Vaness and Associates for Traffic, the principal from Alrigg USA, Brandon Schramm is here, although he may have to catch a plane in a little while, as well as some local partners, pretty much the whole team's here for questions that you might have. Let me run kind of through the refresher of the procedural history of both what we've done with your board, as well as with the zoning board of appeals since the last time we were here, what the request is, and go over the changes that necessitated the major modification filing. I think all the faces are the same on the board, other than the, the missing members from last May. This site has gone through several site plan iterations since the Walmart development first occurred, as you guys know. We came back last year when Alrigg USA had acquired the site with a scaled-down version of development for the out parcel, changing it from a, what was previously a four-building, larger-scale development, down to a three-building development of approximately 16,200 square feet. We worked with you guys for a number of months, and you approved a site plan in connection with the first kickoff building, as Aspen Dental was chomping at the bit to get going, to start the development and get in with a construction schedule that worked for their timetable, and we appreciated working with you on that. At that time, there were not tenants lined up for the other two buildings, what we call on our plan set, and we'll show you, Buildings A and C. Marketing obviously continued over the summer and into the fall. One potential user did surface for Building A, which is Starbucks. And as you guys might remember, we had come to you saying that we did not at the time intend on a drive-through on the site, but that if a tenant came to the site, we would come back before the board, and you would have a chance to work with us on that approval. So in connection with that, we talked to Ken in approximately November, when we were discussing some other kind of interim site condition changes, so that as the other two building developments were being pushed off a little bit, that the site would be appropriate for Aspen Dental to be a standalone. And in connection with that, we broached the subject of the drive-through as well. We discussed with Ken whether we should come back to the planning board first, go to the zoning board, as there was a need for variance to allow for a drive-through if we were going to go that route, or some sort of joint meeting. It was recommended to us that we first go to the zoning board to see if they were amenable to the variance, and then if that threshold was met, then we would come back to you with this filing. So, back in December, we did go to the zoning board of appeals, and they did issue a variance for the drive-through use. So now, we are back before you with a revised plan set that both makes some changes to allow for Aspen Dental to operate as a standalone until the other two buildings are up and running, and with the request to allow Building A to have a drive-through to have the Starbucks project go forward. I'm going to hand it over to Derek to walk through the actual site changes and site circulation that is needed in order to allow for the drive-through, and then we'll hand it over to Sean Kelly from Vaness to talk about what traffic impacts might occur, should there be a drive-through on the site.
Sure. So, if I could talk about the interim condition first. These are two new plans that we added to the approved site plans. The approved site plans were May, not 2019 set. This set has the same amount of sheets, but we did add two new sheets. So if I can draw your attention to, we call them C 600 pH1 and C 601 pH1 with the pH1 indicating Phase 1 condition of the site.
Oh, your microphone is turned around. Oh, this one. There you go.
We're looking at 600 pH1 right now?
That is correct. This is a new plan to the set, and this indicates the condition of the site that we would propose would function with just one building constructed on the site. So currently, the shell and the, the exterior of the Aspen Dental building has been fully constructed. And the, what's shown on this plan and the highlighted is the percentage or the, the piece of the overall project that would be needed for it to safely function without the actual construction of the buildings or the site work related to Building Number One and Building Number Three. So I think in general what this, and Charlie and I had some talk about this when, when it was being constructed, and the fact that our plans back in May showed the, the full build condition for the overall project with three buildings on it. We would like to amend or supplement the set of plans to show that interim condition, so that while the other two sites are being contemplated, and one we're talking about tonight, that it, it could, you know, function and, and basically be, be live with just the one building, while the two other sites are in various stages of, of the next phase of construction.
All right, point of clarification from me. Is it your understanding that the, or this board can help me, that the original site plan said that all three buildings would be operational up and running at the same time to start with?
No.
And now you wanted to go just one, just one? Help me, I'm a little unclear.
Sure. One of the reasons, I don't know if you recall, where we kind of pressed to get a site plan approval was the need for Aspen Dental to come first. They're, you know, the economics of these kinds of deals where you, you need to have a kickoff tenant, and then that attracts the others, and you have a loan that you can pull to do the site work, et cetera. So that was always going to be a single-building initial construction. What the, what maybe from our end, we should have clarified at that time, is this interim condition phase, instead of just showing, you know, the, the full site plan build-out. If you read the decision, it, it talks about Aspen Dental coming first, but there is essentially sheets that needed to be shown for what the interim condition would look like. And now we're coming back to you guys to make sure that we don't, you know...
Understood.
Have anything missing for it to be able to function.
Okay, thanks.
So that's, that's, that's the first changes to this current plan set. The, the other changes are entirely to Building Number One. So if I can focus your attention on...
Which building are you calling Number One?
So I'm calling Building Number One.
Or Building A.
Or Building A, which is the building that's closest to the Walmart entrance.
Aspen's Number Two, right?
Aspen is Number Two, yep. So Building Number One, the approved condition was a 5,400-square-foot retail building. This, our changes decreased the size of that building to 3,300, 3,360 square feet. The building stayed in the same location, and the footprint shrunk. And within that, the old footprint was where we were able to add a 12-foot drive-through for specifically who's hopefully going to be the tenant in this building, Starbucks. And now Starbucks didn't quite need that much space, they, their preference is around a 22, 2300-square-foot space. So this building has been shrunk, and it'll be a two-tenant building with the drive-through solely used for the Starbucks. So as far as drainage and utilities, the, the site really, there wasn't really many modifications that we needed to make, other than the intricacies of how Starbucks needed to function with sewer and water connections. The impervious area stayed the same, because we used, what was formerly a roof area is now the drive-through. So it was a very, for effort from our point, there wasn't much work for us to do as far as changing the site plan, but that's the, the essence and the reason for the change. So it's, it's a much smaller building with, with a drive-through facility.
Which fits within essentially the footprint that you guys had already seen and approved. So smaller building with more circulation.
But now it's two tenants instead of one, did I hear that correctly?
Right.
Correct.
Correct.
So Starbucks is roughly 2,200 square feet, and this is 3,360, so it would be a small user, you know.
So 22 and 11, right?
22, roughly, 22 and 11 is the split, yes.
Do you have a prospect for that second town?
I don't believe we do, it's a small space.
Updates worth sharing?
We've been interviewing various prospects for that space, I don't know if he's committed to a yet service-oriented...
Can you come up and identify yourself, please?
I'm Jeff Bruck, I'm with Bruck Realty Advisors, based out of Andover, Mass, we're the brokerage firm representing the ownership. We leased the property for the ownership, and we're trying to actively engage in securing a tenant for the balance of that space, which is about 1,100 square feet. Typically, it's service-orientated, a lot of tenants that like to neighbor with Starbucks are somebody like a cellular, nail salon, a hair salon, but somebody service-orientated typically.
Also, just because you're up here, and I think you could speak to it, you know, in addition to the value of having the Starbucks as a tenant, it would really set the kind of, the, the tenant profile for the center. There's, you know, a, a real difference between having a Starbucks-anchored kind of center and, you know, a Dunkin' or what have you, so we think that it will attract higher-end, good retail tenants for the site, if we're able to make this work.
So you'd be able to pull the customers from the Starbucks that's in the Target 800 feet away, over here?
So at least from a marketing perspective, and he can comment on that, Starbucks within a Target is not a destination site. Nobody says, you know, I'm going to go seek out Starbucks at Target. It's people who go to Target, and it's an impulse purchase. Otherwise, if that wasn't the case, Starbucks would have no interest in co-locating that close to another, one of their own users.
Right, you see them in Macy's, you go into Macy's, you'll see a Starbucks when you enter on the left side, just to, you know, they accommodate customer base to try to keep them in there shopping more, but...
Two Starbucks, 13 Dunkin' Donuts, you got a long way to catch up, but... My question is, not sarcastically like the last one, the original footprint of 5,000, we targeted for a service company, I'm coming back to parking allocations. Does that, that calculation change at all? Because I think we had more parking than we needed, and we actually discussed not paving some of this area.
So it was, it was targeted as general retail, and Building Three or C, whatever we call it on the plans, was contemplated as potentially restaurant and retail, but to be determined. So if you remember, we had laid out what was viewed as extensive parking, so we made a, a parking field on the, call it, uh, westerly side, a contingent parking field that would not be developed unless it became a restaurant use or some other use that required it. So the parking was less than we had initially pitched for that. Here, changing 5,200 square feet targeted for retail to 3,360, with that being partial, call it restaurant use, for lack of a better word. The square footage of that particular space, assuming a 50 seats and the 30, you know, 3,600 square feet, would be required to have 10 spaces, and in that general vicinity of the Starbucks, I think we have 22 spaces, 16 of which dedicated to that building.
You're saying between the two businesses, only 10? Between the 3,300 square feet, 10 spaces?
Of what would be required by the bylaw.
Yes, yeah. So I, I recall, I think it was Mike, you brought this up, the approach to that building, we were worried about the switchback turn, and there was some correction that was there. So my, my concern would be the backup through a drive-through. So how many cars can we line up before this starts intruding into the main corridor roadway around these buildings?
Yeah, approximately eight or nine.
Eight or nine from the window?
Eight or nine, yeah.
Okay.
So now, what you're seeing is, going to be all in that, that back loop around the building?
Yeah, we purposely, you, you actually order on the face of, there's a, there's a small box about halfway through the drive-through, that's, that's where you would order, and there'd be a five or six or seven-car queue past your ordering point. But yes, we specifically, the pickup is on the left side of the sheet, in the small bump-out area, so you'd have that entire drive-through as a queuing.
Would you, would you mind showing us up there?
Yeah, on a bigger plan, yeah. I can pull that a little closer, if that's helpful. Yeah, the idea would be to be able to provide up to nine cars in a queue around three-quarters of the building, without it interfering at all in the parking or driveways.
And the, and the discharge is completely within the principal parking area? There's no discharge into a main corridor?
Correct. He'll show you where.
So you would enter here, this is, this was one way, and you would enter the drive-through here, place your order, you'd get in the queue, or if there's no queue, just continue around the building, and here's your pickup window here. So you would have this entire shaded area is a dedicated drive-through for just, for just Starbucks drive-through.
And you don't see, depending on commuter traffic and people's affinity for Starbucks, if you had more than eight or nine cars in the queue, now you've got it coming around at the front of the building, and it's starting to interfere with people trying to come out of the queue.
You would, you would probably need, you'd need 12, 13, 14, 15 cars in the queue. You would probably need, you'd need 12, 13, 14, 15 cars. I think what we find is, if you drive to a Starbucks to get your coffee and you see a long line, it's just as easy. It'll be a lot quicker to park.
Yeah, the reason that I had that concern is, if you look across the street at the Wendy's, their queue runs around the building as well. And I routinely have seen that queue all the way around the building, out the entrance, and actually starting to bleed out into the AutoZone parking lot. And I could see the people trying to get out of the queue with their hot coffee, not being able to get out because there's 10 people wanting to get into the queue to get their coffee.
Yeah, well, we do have an area where you can bail out of the drive-through. It's a little closer to.
But they're gonna go to the drive-in window for us, though. They can cut out before.
You can cut out.
No, they, yeah, they'd be able to get out before then.
So they could abandon their order?
No, before they would order, they'd be able to turn out. Or they'd be able to turn and take a parking spot. The other reason, and this ties back to our discussion even from last May, about the number of parking spaces, is it gives the user the flexibility to decide, "I'm not gonna drive through, I'm just gonna run in." With, you know, only a 10 parking space requirement for the square footage, we've put in 22 to allow for parking to be a viable alternative to the drive-through. So that hopefully between, you know, a nine-car queue that wouldn't have any impact on the traffic flow, plus the additional parking, someone sees three open spaces in front of the building versus at the queue, they're gonna make the decision that's, you know, in their own best interest, as well as traffic's. Or at least, that's the intent.
From what we hear, heard from Starbucks, is an eight-person queue is quite a bit, and that's when people will start to make different decisions of how to get their coffee.
And that coincides with the demographics of Wareham?
I don't know the demographics of Wareham.
But we'll punt to Sean on traffic on that, because I think he has some data as well on things that relate to that. He's done traffic studies, not just in Wareham multiple times, but for this exact site through all three site plan iterations. So Sean, you wanna kinda run through the, you know, the general effect that would likely be felt?
First, good evening, members of the board. Again, for the record, Sean Kelly with Van Assen Associates. On behalf of the team, thank you again for having us before you tonight. If it pleases the board, what I'd like to do is just take a few minutes and walk you through the additional work that we've done relative to traffic since the modification to the site plan. As pointed out, we've been involved with this site for quite some time. The first hearing I actually attended for this product, for this particular site was back in March of 2012. So we've been here for all the iterations of Walmart, the original old parcels, the development program that was approved, and then what we're here before you tonight. So I think this is pretty straightforward, just orienting ourselves. The site's at the intersection of Toby Road and Cranberry Highway, Route 28. Route 28 is a state-maintained road by Mass DOT, which means that we need to get a highway access permit for the project. So following, to receive any local approvals, we still have to go back to DOT and get them to approve the Starbucks. The study that we did, that we updated essentially, was consistent with all the other work that we've done in the area. The intersections that we looked at, just to walk through, the signals is denoted by this symbol. We looked at the Wareham Crossing signal, the Toby-Toe Road signal, the limited egress, full access driveway to the site, the intersection across from Wareham Marketplace, and then the intersection downward Main Street and Toby Road connect. There's been a lot of mitigation that was done in this area in support of the Walmart and the old parcels that date back again to the original design in 2012. As you, I'm sure many of you are aware, the intersection of Toby and Toe has been upgraded substantially. The southbound lanes, when this job started, it was essentially a one-lane approach with a little slip ramp. Now it's a three-lane approach. The northbound geometry was improved to take out some of the kinks in the corridor. A three-way stop sign was put in at Toby and Main. And all these things were done, really to support Walmart and the subsequent Alt Parcel projects. The, really, the only change, I think that Derek walked through it, but really, the only change between the program that was approved and the program that we're here for tonight is that some of the retail space is being swapped out for Starbucks. So what we did is we essentially updated our analysis, which before was focused primarily on the evening and Saturday. That's when your retail traffic is highest. We expanded to also include the morning peak hour, which is when Starbucks traffic is highest. So, you know, we ran the traffic for Starbucks, the medical office space, that would be Aspen Dental, the remaining retail space. And then we took adjustments based on industry data to account for internal trips and pass-by trips. Internal trips are trips that occur within the plaza itself. So, you know, not all the customers that go to Starbucks are just gonna pull into Starbucks and leave. You're gonna get a lot of traffic where people go into Walmart to do shopping, they'll stop at Starbucks and get a coffee, or someone that works the dental shop, or someone that works in the adjacent retail. So we take that traffic out of the equation. Also, a lot of the traffic associated with Starbucks, what we call pass-by traffic. The data for coffee shops that have, you know, donut sales, things of that nature, so that during peak hours, up to 80% and even more of it is pass-by. People are already on the corridor, either going to work, shopping destination. We went with a more conservative 50% number. And when you net all that out, what it comes out to is that the project that's before you tonight does about 101 new trips in the morning, about 69 trips in the evening, and about 102 trips on a Saturday. These are your in-and-out, new trips.
I'm sorry, I don't understand why you're subtracting pass-by trips.
So it would've went that way anyways.
Right. Well, we take them out because they're, while they're new to our driveway, they're not new to the area. So they're already coming off 195, we're already on 28, already on Toby Road, already coming off Main Street. So it's just to reflect that they're new to our site.
This is Route 28 trips at this point?
Primarily Route 28.
Okay, I think, I got it.
A little bit on Toby, but mostly, mostly 28, that's right.
However, all those pass-bys would be incremental trips to the internal traffic of the parking area and whatnot.
That's correct. That's why we highlight them, instead of just passing over the issue entirely.
Got it.
So what we have here is, this is the program that you've approved, where we have retail space and no Starbucks. This is the program that we're here tonight for, which has the Starbucks use. And then this is the delta. So this is your total external trips. These are all the driveway trips, including the pass-by. And these are the actual new trips. And what you see is that really, the real focus in terms of new traffic coming here that won't be coming off the corridor, is not coming from Walmart, is in the morning peak hour, where you have about 80 new trips. So about 40 in, 40 out. So you're gonna have less than one car coming every minute, less than one car leaving every minute. When you split that, some's gonna go 28 North, some will go 28 South, some will take Toby down to Main. It's an even smaller number at any given road segment. Evening peak, the commuter peak, very low increase in new traffic, you know, 10 in, 10 out, 20. You're talking a car every six minutes coming, you're going. And then Saturdays is about the midpoint, where you have 48 trips, 23, 25. So essentially, a new car coming every other minute, new car leaving every other minute. So that's really the increases. We looked at the increases to delays on the signalized intersections, and quite frankly, it's, the average motorists won't notice it. You may, instead of waiting 29 seconds, wait 30 seconds, 31 to 32. That's the level of increase. So again, you might wait one more second at a traffic light. In terms of the driveways, you know, we were projecting that people leaving onto Toby Road might wait about five more seconds or less during peak hours. We've done some additional work, and I'll get into that. But in general, what it showed was that there wasn't a real notable increase to delays by changing the retail use to Starbucks. So really, what our focus has been is on the onsite circulation. And I know that Derek walked through all this, but again, at the last meeting, there was a lot of concern about this driveway here being a two-way drive and the friction it could cause if traffic came out this way towards the main intersection onto Toby. We've maintained the one-way inbound flow pattern. And as Derek pointed out, you know, we have ample queuing ability around the building itself. I understand the concern that if this queue backed up, I'm sure that there's a way we can introduce some pavement markings here, don't block driveway, that would, you know, very easily make sure this area is open, so that cars can get out and they don't extend beyond. I mean, quite frankly, you would need to have a queue that went back, you know, probably over 20 cars before you actually started impacting the actual circulation within the site that was external to the Starbucks itself. Now, since we've done our initial study, what we did is, we actually went out and collected some supplemental data. One of the drawbacks to all the work that we've done is, a lot of it's been based on projections of traffic. How much traffic is actually gonna get generated by these other developments in the area. And as you're probably aware, you know, when we got involved with this, we had the additional buildings on our site beside the Starbucks. We had the MaxiGas across the street that's being redeveloped to a larger convenience store gas station. And then we also had the Wareham Marketplace project, where there was a lot of concern about Wendy's and how much traffic Wendy's would generate, and what that impact would be. So we went out and did new counts. Now that the Wareham Marketplace project is essentially completed, Wendy's is operational, the mattress store's operational, the Aldi, the dollar store, the auto parts store. So most of that traffic is out there. And what we found is that that plaza generates significantly less traffic than we projected. And I think it's probably due to the mix of retail tenants, you know, mattress stores, auto parts stores, even Aldi for a grocer. You know, these aren't major generators. These aren't, you know, the types of generators that generate a lot of traffic. Think how many times you go and buy a mattress or go and buy brig pads. So ultimately, what it showed is that the conflicts between our traffic leaving on the Toby Road and the traffic leaving Toby Road opposite us were a lot lower than we expected. We also did a delay study, where we actually went out there on a Saturday afternoon and physically clocked every vehicle leaving our driveway to get a handle of how low those delays are. Our analysis had previously said that you wait anywhere from 45 seconds to a minute getting out of that driveway. We timed over 200 cars leaving in a peak hour. You can, just right there, 200 cars get out in an hour, you know they're not all waiting a minute. And what we found was that the average delay leaving that driveway was actually only 15 seconds in total, and about 20 seconds for a left turn. So the analyses that we've been presenting are quite conservative. And frankly, the reason for it, based on what we observed in the video, is that, you know, the signal up at 28 really controls the flow of traffic on Toby Road. When they get that green light going northbound and the traffic's all making that left, you know, it is difficult to pull out of this driveway because you have a long, steady flow of traffic coming out. But then when the light goes green for Toby Road, what happens is that that traffic coming the other way essentially gets shut off. And you see that the traffic, the platoon that builds up, goes out during that cycle phase. So that even though this isn't a signalized location, and we quite frankly, wouldn't meet the warrants for a signal, its proximity to the signal at 28 really creates gaps in traffic that have allowed the vehicles to get out of here at a much more efficient pace than we had modeled it previously. And our updated analysis reflects that. So I think, you know, in a nutshell, the bulk of the traffic that this project will generate in terms of new traffic is really focused during the morning peak hour. The morning peak hour, the volumes out here are about two-thirds of what they are in the evening. It's a lot lower. Even with the additional traffic we generate, there's ample capacity to accommodate that. The evening peak hour, our generation is very low, you know, 10 in, 10 out. It's not a major impact. And then even on the Saturday midday, as I pointed out, you know, we've gone out, we've done delay studies, we've looked at the traffic across the street. Things just aren't as busy as we had projected. And we're projecting that even with the Starbucks use, delays leaving this driveway, the delays of the signal are gonna be a second, two seconds more than they would be with the plan that you, that this board's already approved.
Sean, can you also just give a little refresher on the site circulation that is directed to pointing the traffic out on the 28 side?
Right. So the, I mean, the ultimate, the ultimate goal really is to, when this site was developed, the idea was that this driveway into 28 would be utilized by a large percentage of the site traffic, because most of the traffic is heading back towards 190, 195. And it's easier to come out here, make the right-hand turn that's essentially, you know, you don't have to get a gap in one direction, and then make a straight shot through the light. What happened, you know, I think with the project first, because a lot of it was Walmart, is people just got used to utilizing this driveway. What we've done is tried to create a one-way traffic flow pattern. We bring people back out, and they're gonna be directed essentially to come out this way through onsite signage, so that it'll say, "To Route 28 Southbound, to I-95 Westbound." And it'll direct them to come this way through the site and exit this way, to really just try to minimize the use of this driveway, unless you have to make a left-hand turn to get onto 28 Northbound. Then you would need to come out this drive. But if you're heading south, if you're heading towards the interchange, you know, really, this isn't the driveway that you should be using. You should be coming out this drive and making that right-hand turn back towards the interchange at 28 South.
I think I understand. I just want, this is really important for me, so.
Sure.
Do it again. I've come in off of Toby Road, I wanna get my coffee, and I wanna get back on 195 after I've picked it up.
Right.
Show me that.
So you'd come in, you'd make that right. And really, depending where you come from, you know, if it was a, my sense is that if you were coming northbound on 28 and you missed the green arrow, you may come through and just come in this way as well. But if you came in this way here, you would come in, make the right-hand turn, make your right into Starbucks.
Which is one way there.
Which is one way, so you won't have any conflict. You'd come into the drive-through, get your coffee, come back out. You can either make this right and come out this way, or you could, you know, go through the, I guess, the spine road and go this way. But I think this is probably gonna be the more, the more convenient route, and the route that we would wanna sign as the exit. But the goal, again, is just to ensure that if you're heading south, if you're heading towards the interchange, you don't need to use this driveway. And in fact, you may find that, you know, given the delay on lefts here versus a, really a free right-hand turn, this is actually gonna be the quicker move.
Okay. Will they know that?
Well, the idea is we'll have internal signs that say, "To Route 28 Southbound, to I-95," with an arrow that points them in that direction.
And not only that, but by having it be a one-way in, there isn't gonna be a flow of traffic to try to get out to Toby Road that way, because it's gonna be an illegal turn.
Right. And I think if I was a motorist and I had made this turn here and looked, you know, I saw that it was a point where the cycle had just hit at the right time and the work cars backed up here, I'm probably not gonna wanna go and get into that queue. And I know I have a relatively free move right there.
You said that the intersection of the driveways and Toby Road does not meet the warrant for a signal. Why is that?
Well, you need to have a certain minimum vehicular volume, and these intersections haven't met that volume.
Where, what intersection are you talking about?
The main, the main intersection right here. The main driveway that serves us off Toby and also serves Wareham Crossing.
But that's not a state road.
It really doesn't matter if it's state or local. It's a federal mandate. So, you know, we run into this all the time with developers, say, you know, "I wanna build a Walgreens and wear a mask. I'm on a lot, not a state road. Can't I just put a traffic light up?" And we tell them, "You need to meet a certain level of volume." It's actually illegal to put a light up if you don't meet a certain vehicular volume. So whether it's Mass DOT jurisdiction or town jurisdiction, really has no bearing. It's purely a volume criteria, and we just aren't.
Well, I would think there'd be an argument to say, based on the risk factors, the light is justified.
Yeah, I know when we went through this process with DOT, and again, DOT's been involved in this every step of the way, the need for a light there's been looked at multiple times. And quite frankly, they never had any appetite to put a light there. Because their concern, I think more so than getting people out of Walmart, is the fact that what they don't wanna have happen is that this light goes red, and people are coming around the bend, and now this starts to back up into Route 28. You know, their primary concern is the integrity of the state highway system, and ensuring that nothing that we do is gonna make that state highway system operate worse. We've reviewed it with them multiple times. At one point, we even, I think at one point when Walmart initially got involved, they were thinking, "Maybe we wanna have a light." They put some conduit into the ground in case DOT changed their mind at a future date. But again, we don't meet the volume. There's been no support at the state level. And I don't, I don't see that they're gonna change their mind on that one.
Well, I don't, but that volume wasn't judged on two opposing drive-throughs.
Well, when we did, when we, actually, that's not entirely true. Some of the background when we got involved with this was that to ultimately construct the improvements at 28 and Toby Road, we needed to work with the Beetons, the cranberry growers, because they held land that was necessary to make. This intersection, I wish it had an older aerial, but before the Walmart project, this was probably one of the most poorly designed and dangerous intersections in the town. I mean, nothing lined up. The islands were haphazard at best. The Toby and Toe were offset by 30 or so feet, so they weren't even lined up right. It was a, I mean, it was a disaster, quite frankly. So when we got involved with it, you know, the Beetons recognized that, hey, to fix this right, we need to give you some of our land, so that you can move Toby Road over into our property and line it up right with Toe Road. That way, you can eliminate some of the issues with the signal timing and phasing, where it just doesn't work great because of the misalignment and the lack of the proper geometry. They understood that they weren't gonna be selling cranberries on that site for the rest of time. And part of the deal was, we will give you this land for free, and you'll build the improvements. When I say "we," I'm talking Walmart. But we wanna make sure that the geometry that you design accommodates us having future retail development on this site when we decide to move our cranberry operations elsewhere. So this geometry that was, again, it was designed in conjunction with our firm working for Walmart, another engineering firm that was hired by the Beetons. The town hired their own engineering firm out of New York that did a peer review of everything. And then Mass DOT was involved. So there really were four different traffic engineering entities that reviewed this design specifically for Walmart, and also for the future development on the Beaton property, which is now Wareham Marketplace. So it was always contemplated, and that was certainly a design consideration at the time. time.
And even with the, with the assumed counts that went into the permitting of Wareham Marketplace, now, that didn't meet the criteria for the stoplight. And even still, now that you did an actual count post-development, that number's even lower.
I mean, one of the peak hours, I think it was the evening peak, we had projected, I think, about a hundred and twenty cars would be coming out of the Wareham Marketplace driveway, and we counted forty-seven. So that's, I mean, there weren't really, and again, it's, I suspect that most of the traffic you're seeing in that driveway is Wendy's. You know, I've been out there a handful of times, I've been in front of this board and the zoning board a handful of times, and I always go out there in the evening. And I'm sure you've been out there, the other uses in that plaza really don't generate a whole lot of traffic. I don't think I've ever seen anyone walking into that mattress store or the car parts. It's just, it just happens to be a certain mix of retail uses that don't really have a major generator. Even Aldi, for the work that we do with supermarkets, they're one of the lowest generating supermarkets, you know, possibly the lowest. They just, it's, there just really isn't a real anchor in there that draws a lot of traffic.
And that question was actually important to Alrig as well, to know the real impact of the traffic, because when we asked Sean to do the actual count, we didn't know whether the number would come out higher, the same, or lower. Fortunately, you know, we view it as fortunate that it's lower, but, you know, we made the ask that we get the data and present it to you without knowing that the answer would be favorable to the development.
I think, I'm still concerned with those opposing drive-throughs coming out onto Toby, but is there a reason why you can't offer Starbucks Building Three, a section of Building Three? What is, what is Three being reserved for?
Three isn't being reserved for anything in particular right now. We're involved in marketing it to various uses and categories, but Starbucks, we've done a lot of Starbucks work on the brokerage side, and when they pick their real estate, they want to have a dominant position on a corner, and so they have the best visibility and customers have the best access to their store. That would be the best location for them. That's why they've chosen it. They've also looked at the site and how it circulates and flows for its customers and stacking and with their different operations departments, and they feel very comfortable with this design as well.
Not only that, but in order to do the same solution, if you will, of putting the drive-thru within a shrunken building footprint, this is the smaller building, so therefore we're actually losing less rentable square footage versus if you take the same reduction around Building C, you're going to be losing a significant amount of, a significant amount more of rentable square foot at the development.
Still trying to get my mind wrapped around the town of Wareham drinking Starbucks. Can't get that out of my mind.
It's only an option. It's not something that anyone has to choose.
Yeah. Well, I certainly like how you're attempting to push them out to that back there. So this is, this is two complete rotations around the building to get a coffee. The other thing, I don't, I understand the math in the, the traffic math. So if there's a net gain of a hundred and seventy cars coming in and out of there, those cars, each car is a single commuter, like most Americans driving to work, right?
Right.
Times a three-dollar-and-fifty-cent coffee, that business is only yielding six hundred dollars a day. In my mind, that's not enough volume to justify that store there. So they know something that this traffic doesn't know.
That traffic count is the delta between what the traffic count was anticipated for the solely retail versus the traffic count of additional cars for Starbucks with a drive-thru. So that's not the total customer base.
I'm just coming back, this is from a business owner, this business has got to yield two thousand dollars a day. In order to do that, it's got to push three hundred cars through that drive-thru window.
Oh, you're making a, yeah, you're making an assumption.
Because people park in the parking lot, they'll go in.
Well, it's still a car.
This is a Tier One Starbucks. This isn't a Tier Three Starbucks. I mean, they're in filling trade areas that they wouldn't have considered filling in five years ago. You know, unlike Dunkin' Donuts on every corner, they're not on every corner. They're filling in trade areas now that they wouldn't have considered five years ago. This isn't a very high-volume consideration for them. It's a good volume, but not a very high volume. Otherwise, they wouldn't have chosen this trade area.
And I'm also ashamed to admit it, but I know that a grande white mocha costs five sixty-one, because I get one almost every day in my building, and then you add on getting, you know, banana nut bread and what have you, and that's just one guy with one order not ordering for anyone else and it's ten bucks. So if the economics weren't there, they obviously wouldn't be interested, but the traffic data is what the traffic data is, so.
Could you go back to the site plan, put the site plan up there? I mean, I have a question to have about it. If somebody, if somebody comes in, in from the, from Route twenty-eight into there, comes down, how do they, can they make this turn here into, into the drive-thru?
No, no. I think if you had, based on whatever, if you were a larger vehicle, that would be a tough turn. And one thing we had talked about, quite frankly, candidly, is potentially making this one-way out so you really couldn't, I mean, there is a benefit to be able to come in here and get to these parking spaces. You could do a no-left, a no-right turn sign to avoid that, but certainly, no, the idea is to have, if you come in from this driveway, and maybe it's more signage, drive-through entry that could point in this way, but we, we want them making this maneuver. We don't want them coming down and trying to make that hairpin turn to get back into the drive-thru. Larger vehicles, quite frankly, wouldn't be able to make the move. If you were driving a Chevy Suburban or something, it's not going to happen. So I think it's a good point, and whether it's a sign that says drive-through entrance or whether it's making this one-way, you know, I think that can be addressed, but certainly the idea is not to have cars making that move, because it would be very tight.
Yeah, we're amenable to making.
On-site signage would be great here if you want to put directional signage to do that. We did this in Hadley, Mass. It was Starbucks on an end cap and there was similar circulation to this, and we did onsite signage directing people in certain areas to go to that specific entrance to avoid problems, and it's worked out fine.
So in basic math, how many, how many customers a day would they expect at that location?
Based on the industry data?
Yeah.
A Starbucks, and this is, this would be, and again, this is the industry data, they could do up to nine hundred customers a day, which, you know, is probably a little bit in the high side, but that would be the potential based on IT. And that's over twenty-four hours.
Okay. And out of, so let's play devil's advocate and say we take half of that, so five hundred customers.
Sure.
And out of that, what's the percentage that parks as opposed to the drive-thru?
Yeah, you know, I'll be honest with you, I haven't really seen any, any data on Starbucks specifically in terms of.
I just, I, I'm still having kind of a hard time with the traffic pattern of the drive-thru.
Right.
So if you've got five hundred a day and forty percent of them drive-through, which I think is low, but.
I think that's probably low, right.
And what's the, what's the Starbucks data for turnaround as far as level of service? Just an average customer in the drive-thru for one minute, two minutes, three minutes?
Well, what we do, what we've done in the past is we actually have gone up to operational Starbucks and measured the queues. You know, we'll go out there in the morning peak hour and actually just measure how far these queues go back. And as Derek pointed out, typically, you know, ten, ten cars is pretty much as much as you're going to see, because it does become a frustration level. And if you have to wait even just four minutes per order, you know, the tenth car in line, you really want to spend forty minutes of your morning if you have no work, you know, waiting in line for a coffee.
Starbucks drinkers are a strange bro.
But it's, but it typically is, it's ten. I mean, I think we may have seen, once or twice seen it where it goes up to, say, twelve, but even then, you know, I think as long as you properly sign this to not block the exit, you know, you would need to have a queue of probably over twenty cars to actually get to the point that you block circulation.
What's the dimension of that building?
It is about, I believe it's.
Thirty-three sixty.
Now, what is the length and width of the building?
Sixty by thirty, something in that range.
Yeah, I wrote it down. It's roughly seventy by fifty.
Seventy by fifty, and the average length of a car is?
Seventeen feet.
Seventy divided by seventeen is four cars. So on the long side, four cars and then half of that. So you'll cover three sides of that building with twelve cars.
Max queue, right?
Thirteenth car is at the window.
Right, and again.
We're assuming even a lower number to be conservative. We had said nine, but.
Yeah, I'm still, but to Mike's point, you know, five hundred customers a day, double up in the car, two hundred and fifty cars, we're not too far apart, but I, I don't think that these cars are loaded with two or three people. I think a hundred and seventy is such a low number of additions coming in and out of that parking lot.
And I, what I see, not that I frequent it, because I don't eat that stuff, but they have the signage that you're talking about over at the Wendy's, don't block the drive.
Right.
Nobody pays attention to that. That's merely a suggestion that.
It's also just so rarely an issue that we're mainly probably talking about morning commute time that it'd ever be an issue that it'd be backed up into the traffic area, if at all.
Why do those?
And if we have to, we, you know, we certainly could, you know, take some sample data or get you more additional data of, much like we did the actual traffic count, instead of just relying on the assumptions for Wareham Marketplace, but, you know.
And right now, you don't have no.
This data is.
You don't have no idea what's going in the back of that building either, right? At this time?
The back of the building?
Well, the other half.
Oh, the other eleven hundred square feet?
Yeah. I mean, we did, we did generate traffic for that as retail space, so it's, you know, it was accounted for.
Yeah, that's already factored in, and non-drive-through traffic.
Correct.
Those shadowed parking spots, those were the agreed-upon shared spots with Walmart that are not colored?
Yes.
That's where the campus park.
That's right.
Right.
Where the RVs park right now.
Yeah, nobody, nobody going to Starbucks is going to use those. That's not happening.
Are those actual developed spots?
Yes, those exist.
Or was that the overflow? Where was the overflow? We asked you to.
In the, go ahead, Sean. Yeah, the green area. The northwesterly there, yeah.
I got to tell you, I am struggling mightily with doing almost two laps around the building to get my coffee. I'm thinking about the people trying to go into the store, the people trying to go in and out of the other store. I'm all for what you're trying to do, but I think there's got to be a better way.
I agree. I think the idea of Starbucks is great. You know, I mean, if we're going to add another retail place, it should be something that's not, it sounded like a snob, a little bit higher end.
But again, I think it's important to note that the reason we're having them circle the building the way that you're mentioning is to address comments received from this board. I mean, they have to circle the building for once. You can't do a drive-through if they don't, so that's.
Right, it's one and a quarter in total, basically.
But this, this pattern here, you know, coming in this way and going out that way, I mean, that's, that was just simply to pull this traffic, make it one-way, get it away from this driveway, and then get them to a location where we can direct them to come out here.
Every drive-thru is a minimum of three-quarters of a circle of the building. This is one and a quarter, and this one in particular is very similar, if you have ever been up to Plymouth, to the Colony Place development. They have the shops at Colony Place. There's an Aspen Dental next to a Starbucks, which is.
That place is a zoo.
Yeah.
Well, I live, I live three minutes away from it, and I'm at that Starbucks regularly, and it works. Functionally, else I wouldn't go there almost every day.
You'd almost get yourself killed trying to get to it. See, that Starbucks is up there with the Olive Garden, isn't it?
Yes, and the Aspen Dental's, it's a three-building kind of triplex.
That's two rounds, that's two.
It's one and a quarter. You come in, well, you come in here, go this way, and then come back that way. It's virtually the same. And it's, I mean, that's a high-end development, the shops at Colony Place, so the traffic there is significantly higher than what's expected here, and I'm there almost every day, and it works.
And again, Starbucks internally has looked at this with operations and real estate, and they feel very comfortable with this particular site plan.
But guys, there's two storefronts here with people parking on the bottom of the map, and those parking spots, trying to walk past two lanes of cars in the drive-thru. I don't see it. I.
Well, again, the only, the only time you would actually walk, you know, the great majority of the time, the drive-thru would be accommodated within this, this area. You know, in the morning, for the busiest two, three, four minutes, you know, you may see a car or two sneak out here.
No.
Yeah, but they're still passing through that area to enter the drive-thru.
I got to go, let me, let me be real clear, what I think's happening here, so you can help me, that to get my coffee in the morning, I have to drive from.
Why don't you bring it over to him so he can point it?
Thanks, yeah. I need to drive in front of the building once.
Yep.
And in front of the building again to get out.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely. But it's really, I'm not sure there's any way around that, given the orientation of the building and not allowing them to exit back out over here.
The building isn't built yet, right?
That's correct.
I think you need to go back to the drawing board.
Well, why don't we do this? There's already two members of the board who weren't here and can catch up on the hearing, you know, by watching. Let us get some more data, some more information, and talk internally. Obviously, it's a plan that we believe in and we think works. It's our job to convince you of that or to make adjustments. So I would love to turn the focus so that we have as much data from you guys as possible to respond to, if Charlie has any comments on the engineering side to the site plan submittal, in particular on the interim conditions, because that building exists, and then we could carry it over and come back to you and hopefully have some more answers or suggestions on how we can make it work for everybody.
That's great.
We want, we want you to feel good about it. Honestly, we do, or we won't be good partners, so.
I want you to. I want you to get there. I want you to make me feel comfortable.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, even if, to the extent of setting up site visits or something, where we can go out and see a similar setup and you guys can see whether it's something that.
So I'd like to ask Charlie, do you, do you have any comments from an engineering perspective on what you've seen?
At the Dunkin' Donuts in West Wareham, you picked me up. I haven't seen the plan at all, so I would prefer to reserve any comments with respect to the new proposal. I'd like to be able to compare the total paved area and turnouts and turn-ins and so forth to the original plan, so I would be prepared to write something up and get it to your board for the next hearing if you continue it.
I just want to clarify, though, we submitted the whole plan set maybe two months ago, right?
No, you submitted these ones February sixth, I believe.
Well, for, we, the plans, the package was finalized February sixth, but you've had these plans since December twenty-third.
I've not seen the plans. It's as simple as that, okay? But I do have a couple of other issues that I would like the board to consider, and it's with respect to Aspen Dental in particular. I would like to know exactly what the limits of the obligations are for Aspen Dental in terms of that site as a whole. If it's what's paved on sheet six hundred PH one, it certainly doesn't include two of the drainage areas that are outside that. So I'd like for the applicant to specify exactly how much of the existing construction, how much of the construction that hasn't been completed is the obligation of Aspen Dental to complete.
We can certainly give you that information, but there is a PH, there's a C six oh one as well as six hundred, and what's shown on there, in my estimation, is even though the Aspen Dental is probably twenty-five percent of the floor area of this entire development, I'd say we're going to construct maybe seventy-five to eighty percent, and that includes the underground infiltration system, which has been constructed, and to be constructed, the three other, you know, surface infiltration areas. And then, like I said, in my estimation, probably eighty percent of the utilities.
You have one infiltration area that was built, and I wrote about that. You've got another drainage area, which is over next to the secondary access to twenty-eight, which has been a long time coming. I would. I would expect to see that entire drainage area completed 100% as a part of the Aspen Dental project.
That, that's our expectation as well.
As well as the secondary drainage area that is in between the Walmart parking area and the, and what you're calling the rear of the Aspen Dental building.
Yep, that's our expectation.
And I'd also like to have a confirmation as to when that infiltration area that was built and improperly backfilled is going to be corrected, according to the report that I submitted to the town.
I can say we're, we're working on that, that there's a dispute, might be a strong word, between the site contractor, but I'm in agreement with your opinion and the planning board's opinion, so we hope to have that finalized in the next couple of weeks.
And the correction made, when?
Either a correction made or follow-up information.
Because the corrections to be made.
If we have to take it up or redo it, we will do that.
You will have to make some corrections, because part of what you're showing on that plan for the new building is underneath what they backfilled simply by dumping it with a front-end loader and didn't compact a thing. So as far as I'm concerned, they should remove all of the material that they incomplete the, incomplete compaction on, and do it again.
Noted and agreed.
The only thing they compacted was a small triangle that's underneath the parking area, the side of Aspen Dental, because that, that piece is sort of kitty-corner to where the road comes in.
Yep.
So what they did was backfill that with reclaimed material against a sidewall of uncompacted material against it in the excavated area. The rest of that entire excavation was never backfilled and compacted properly. So what I, I made a recommendation at the time they were doing it, I said, "Take that in, that material that you've backfilled, and pull it over the rest of the area and compact it properly, and then come back again and backfill the whole thing." They ignored it, and said that it wasn't a part of their contract, and it got backfilled without any compaction whatsoever. I'm not very happy about that, and I'll be very honest with you about it.
Yep, noted and agreed.
So you can be, someone from your team can be in touch with Charlie within two weeks?
Yeah, we're, we're, we've been working on it, it's not, it wasn't a simple solution, and we'll be in touch before the next meeting, not only on that issue, but are happy to sit down and go over any other open issues.
Can I offer a suggestion on this?
Of course. I guess I want to ask the board a couple of questions. Is the New England Farms going to have a drive-through where MaxiGas was?
No.
Sean says no, and he's the traffic guy.
They have a drive-through when you get that private now?
Not yet.
Unless it's changed.
Not yet.
Not yet.
I'm sure it'll fire around the back of the building, just like the next one, so.
It's no longer New England Farms as well, it's Nurya that purchased the opportunity to build on that site.
What do they do?
They're just like New England Farms, just different, just a different group.
So, are we, I understand the consistency with the setback here, but if you were to take this footprint and slide it forward to this corner up here like this, is it possible all of this roadway, no parking, move your parking off to this side, or move it to the back over here, slide this forward like this, and you would have a run feeding your Starbucks, have them take a left turn, pick up their coffee here, they'll call it in over here somewhere, have them pick up their coffee here, and then they're on a straight shot. So aesthetically, how close can we get before this looks way out of balance? Rather than circle around this building, just have them come in, straight through, take a left, pick up your coffee, and go.
Then the issue there would be the, the order versus pickup queue. First, we'll look at the suggestion, but what immediately jumped out at me would be that you wouldn't have enough of a distance between the order window, if you will, and the pickup window, based on what you're describing, but I don't know what.
You could order on this corner, I mean, what you'd also have to do is flip-flop these two tenants. If you, if you push Starbucks, I don't know what they want, they want two profiles coming out of here, but if Starbucks was over here on this side, then if this was a nail salon, their parking would be directly adjacent to the structure. Way to have to solve it, I, I just, you know, what I think is most conducive is to come in, you take a left, you take a left, and you're straight out, it's none of this NASCAR track two times around the building. I can't tell you how much frustration I would have if I was a barber shop there, and every, I couldn't cross my parking lot, because even if it's not backed up, that's even worse, because at least if it's backed up, cars are stopped.
Sure.
We've got two cars circling around, just as Richard was saying, but, so, so my question to the board and to the developers is, was there any setback restriction here, or did you just?
No, it's not a, it's not a setback issue, it's, it's a site layout issue, and different scenarios have been looked at, and obviously we'd have to talk offline, but your, your suggestion and your point is to try to minimize the.
Yeah, I mean, even.
Trip traffic across the face of either pedestrian or other, other traffic pulling into the other tenant in the building.
Yeah.
So point noted.
You could even angle this a bit and line this drive-through up strictly with your main thoroughway right there. It's probably less development cost, and they would still gain two faces at the wall, it's probably a better profile. I don't know why Starbucks would want this inside anyways, unless they're trying to catch the view of Walmart, this seems more appealing.
The exterior facade facing the entrance drive is a valuable end cap from that perspective, but, you know, your, your point is taken, so. Let me just add, all those buildings, they're very geometric to the, to the frontage on both roads, the setback to the parking is the same, and then all your dimensions line up the same, you have a width of parking space, and then a 24-drive aisle, and then a 10-foot entrance handicap sidewalk area, so it, it's, it's, there's less flexibility than there appears off of the front, frontage, and also that L-shaped area, that small area doesn't lend itself to anything, to a lot of flexibility, but we'll certainly look at it and take your comments into consideration.
Let's see what we can come back with.
If they do that, they can charge another 50 cents of coffee.
I'll have to go one less day a week, then.
It'll be a gas consumption calculation, they'll save gas for the customers, they can give a 25% discount.
Any more questions for the board or requests for our next show with these guys?
Just again, from you guys, our meeting in two weeks, plus or minus, is that right? I know sometimes there's conflicts either with town meetings, holidays, other things, just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Charlie, you got anything on your wish list?
Just a copy of the variance that was issued by the Board of Appeals. I'd like to see that.
The next meeting is March 9.
Mr. Swanson, you have enough information to digest for the next two weeks, or something else you're looking for?
I have everything I need.
Mike?
I'm all set.
Mark, you have anything else on this top?
Okay, entertaining motion to continue to.
March 9.
March 9.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appreciate your time, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it very much.
I hope the drive-through was big enough to get my truck in there.
Well, the thing is, we got to watch, is when they come in Walmart, we strip their parking lot, like what I want. Them parking spaces are so small.
Yeah.
They're all designed for contact ass.
You need, you need.
That was the Vegas show.
Vegas is in May, so, yeah, we were actually probably just right around that time.
It was, yeah, I think that was your time crunch, as you were trying to make Vegas.
I'll get him.
Okay, Ken, that's about it, we wrapped up?
We're all done.
Entertaining motion for adjourn.
We got to, you got to sign off of these minutes?
Yeah, we got to approve the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know, that's what I kept telling you.
Sorry. Okay, you guys have time to read through the minutes for January 13?
I did.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Nope, all in favor?
Aye.
Votes 3, 0, 1, I can't vote on them, I wasn't here.
Okay.
And is the motion on the floor to adjourn?
Oh, I, I need to, real quick.
Everybody 10 as well.
I told everybody I would be happy to speak to the master plan endorsement article at town meeting. I'm not going to be here.
Cancel your vacation.
That might happen, I'm supposed to go on a trip that's probably going to get canceled due to coronavirus, all right?
What was I saying, you going to China?
So that, and I'll be about an hour and a half late next week, can't avoid it, so.
Make sure you bring a note, make sure you bring a note.
Okay, I will. Motion to adjourn?
Motion made to adjourn and second, and all in favor?
Aye.
How'd you catch him on that back though?